One, two, three, four, four, three, two, one. Hi. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4-10, adequate notice of this meeting is pursuant to, our adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools and Cablevision Channel 118, and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, October 14th. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Roydell?
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices to provide that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board, therefore, takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Ms. Francisco.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Ms. Choudry.
Here.
Ms. Mazone.
Here.
Mr. Slade.
Here.
Mr. Solakowski.
Here.
Mr. Venkatesan.
Here.
And Ms. Stantuno.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Can we all stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Any questions on the, or discussion on the minutes?
They are coming.
Can we have a volunteer for the Code of Ethics for next month?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
All right, thank you. We'll have our student report. We'll have two retirements next week. Mr. Bragan, oh, sorry, superintendent's report?
Absolutely. Thanks, Ms. Stantuno. Just have a few things. One is, I want to report that over the past month, we had several community meet and greet sessions across the district to listen to parents, students, and residents. I would like to thank everyone who attended and share their honest and thoughtful feedback. Common themes did emerge around facilities and safety, including bathroom maintenance, opening the bridge to the Grade Nine Center, requests for additional security measures, transportation concerns included bus behavior, and expanding late-day routes for after-school programs. Families also discussed excessive homework in the early grades, the need for improved inclusion and communication in special education, and ideas such as a parent university and more middle school intermurals. There were also questions about technology filters, budget transparency in communications, as well as suggestions to enhance the freshman orientation. We will use all of this feedback to help guide our planning and communication moving forward, ensuring that we continue to strengthen partnerships and provide the best possible experience for every Olbridge student. Once again, I just want to thank all the people who attended and provided all that feedback for us to help make us schools even better than what they already are. So, thank you for everyone who came out to the meet and greets that we've already had. After this, I would like to ask Mr. Caulfield to come up and begin our presentation on some of our assessment data. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bragan, Olbridge Township Board of Education, for the opportunity to present this year's annual testing report. Thank you again, Olbridge Township Board of Education, for your continued support of the school-wide PSAT administration at Olbridge High School. On October 24th, over 2,000 students are scheduled to participate in the third annual digital PSAT. General updates. In August, the NJDOE announced a new statewide assessment, the NJSLA Adaptive. I apologize for reading this, but there was really no other way. So, a key feature to these assessments is their adaptive format. As students progress through the test, future questions are determined based on their responses, creating a more personalized and appropriate experience for each learner. This approach can help reduce testing anxiety by presenting students with questions closer to their current level, encouraging confidence and focus. I look forward to experiencing this with the state. So, there is a field test scheduled in November, where we'll get to kind of see what this looks like. And also, a key feature of the new assessment is that the test is not as long. Now, on to the data. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment was administered to students in grades three through nine in the spring of 2025. Tested areas include grades three through nine ELA, grades three through eight math, and then grade nine, their coursework based on Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. All NJSLA data by grade level compared to the state of New Jersey. I will include College Board data, including a five-year analysis of SAT achievement. The elementary schools, we performed similar to how we have in the past. You can see in grade three, we significantly outperformed the state of New Jersey. Similar result in grade four. And also in grade five. As we transitioned to the middle school, we see similar results. We outperformed the state in both areas of grade six. Also, both areas in grade seven. And for the first time, we swept the state of New Jersey in grades three through eight. Transitioning to the high school, you see the grade nine ELA, we were outperformed by the state of New Jersey by one point. In Algebra I, we outperformed the state of New Jersey by nine points. Algebra II and geometry, for the first time, we have a scale score average of over 800 points, which is good news for Algebra II. And we also outperformed the state of New Jersey in the area of geometry. Before I transition to the College Board data, is there any questions regarding the NJSLA data?
I have a question. So, with the new adaptive test approach that the state NJDOE is recommending us forward, I'd like to understand a little more on what does it mean when they say to reduce the anxiety by presenting students with questions closer to their current level? So, is it like if somebody is a very good top-performing student, so he or she will be challenged with more closer to that levels versus somebody who is performing moderate, let's say, for the sake of it? So, more questions will be presented to them at that moderate level? I don't understand a little bit on...
Yes, I did, I did contact, so the, previously it was Pearson. So, for the past 10 years, Pearson was Park, and then it was also Pearson for the NJSLA transition. So, it's been the same basic corporation that's kind of produced the test. So, Cadmium is the new company that's going to provide the assessment. So, in my conversations with them, the analogy that they gave me was if the questions are based on difficulty of one to 10, they basically start with a difficulty of five, and if that is, if you're a high-achieving student, and you can breeze through those questions, then you're going to be the next, and it says it's question by question to kind of determine that adaptive style of that test. So, a student who's going to have those test questions, the difficulty of level seven, eight, or nine, they don't need to have the questions on the difficult level, level of two or three. And then again, a student with that difficulty level where it's more appropriate to be level three or four, they don't need to spend their time on those, you know, seven or eight-level difficulty questions.
Okay. Just my apprehension here is that what if my top-performing student is able to sweep through it versus a moderate student? I don't know the scores, how the scores are going to be assigned. That's just my only apprehension. If the scores are going to come as an outcome of thoroughly evaluating the type of the questions, and then how the student is answering, and set at the same level, then I think we are okay. But if the scoring mechanisms are going to be different, then I think that's not fair on the kids either ways.
And I mean, it does align with the College Board. So, the College Board transitioned three years ago to the digital assessment, they went to adaptive as well. So, the PSAT in 2023 was the first adaptive PSAT, and then in the spring of 2024 was the first adaptive SAT. So, they're aligning the state assessment along with the College Board assessments as well.
I see that we are going to test this in the month of October, it looks like, right? Or later in the months, I think. Maybe if we can get some kind of a report on how the test went, that will be of information for us.
As per the August 13th memo from the broadcast from the State Department of Education, they are not providing any feedback to the districts.
No, no, I thought we are going to test this, no? We're required to field test this fall.
Yeah, we are required to field test, but the Cadmium is not providing us any data.
Oh, okay. The outcomes or the results, they're not providing us anything. Understood that. But the state is not sharing with us what the test results are?
Nothing.
Then what's the point? How will we learn how they are measuring us?
So, the Cadmium is going to use...
Sorry, it's not a question to you, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I could answer. I mean, Cadmium's going to use the information to field test to kind of, you know, to calibrate the difficulty of those questions.
Maybe I would reach out to Mr. Dr. Bragan, sorry. I would reach out to the State Department to follow up on this. You know, we would like to see the insights. They are testing on our kids. So, I would like to see now our kids are performing in that fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just, go ahead. That those numbers are, you know, impressive as how high we went K through eight, or three through eight, and, you know, great job to the students and the families and the staff that prepared the kids for this, because those numbers are impressive.
Yeah, we did, it was a great year.
So, I don't even know if you know the answer to this question or have anticipated, like, what do you think the difference is going to be with the scores that come in, and how they're going to score the students compared to how they've scored the students when they all had the same test? Like, do you feel like it's going to be apples and oranges next year when we try to compare 2025 to 2026?
It's going to be impossible to compare 2025 to 2026, so I think we're going to get a baseline year in 2026. So, that happened in 2015. I had the pleasure of presenting in that year as well, as we transitioned to what was then Park. So, that is the challenge, where, you know, I obviously have all the district data and do look back at all the years, and this year was a very successful year in the world of state testing, and also College Board testing, which you'll see in the following slides. But there'll, it'll have to be a baseline year. We won't have much to compare to.
Thanks.
You're welcome. College Board historical data. As always, I would provide a five-year analysis of SAT scores and a five-year analysis of advanced placement data, including percentage of students scoring three plus, which is the barometer that the College Board uses to determine students working at the collegiate level, and total AP students and total AP exams. For the SAT, EWR is English Writing and Reading, previously known as Verbal. So, you can see from 2023, we have a nice incline. We've improved from 2023, all of our verbal scores. The 21 and 22 data, that was the post-COVID era, where only our most competitive students were testing. So, the data for all districts would have been inflated in 21 and 22. A similar result in math. You can see a general improvement from 2023. Good news. Then when you combine the data for the SAT combined, you see a nice improvement from 2023 through 2025. 2021 and 2022, if you do omit that data, which I would never, obviously, but actually, 2025 was the highest SAT combined that Olbridge High School has had since, for basically 13 years since I've been here, and probably ever. AP percentage of students who score three plus. So, you can see a nice incline here, 21 and 22. Again, the data is hard to look back at those years with the testing in a mask and social distancing, and also SAT optional among all the colleges and universities. So, you can see 2025, 87% of our students are performing at the collegiate level, which is great news to all who are involved in that. And then the numbers that I appreciate that are steady at this point, total students, as well as total AP exams. In the new world of the early college program and dual enrollment, you would think that possibly these numbers would start to go down, because students have the opportunity to gain college credit while they're in high school. So, these numbers sustaining where they have been is good news. You can see for total students, the number has sustained, and also for total AP exams. This concludes the NJLSA portion of the annual testing report. Thank you, Olbridge Township Board of Education. Any questions? It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Annie DeKeeler, who will be presenting access for MLs.
That was record speed. I don't know if I can beat that. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to present the access score report for 2425. The access, the access test is a test given to all multilingual learners every year in the spring, and it is designed to focus on the alignment of our English language development skills. In the multi-language classroom, students learn the language of ELA, language of math, language of science, language of social studies, and it is immersed with social and instructional language that students have to learn throughout the school day. All four domains of language are focused on during the school day. The access test itself focuses on all four, all four domains of language, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And the goal of the ML program is to exit the student into the general education population. And we do that based on multiple criteria. Exit is based on getting an access score on the test of a 4.5 on a 6.0 scale. Another part of the multiple criteria is the English Language Observation Form, which teachers fill out once students have completed the access test. We also use teacher recommendation, classroom teacher recommendation, sometimes counselors and parents are brought into the meetings, and we use student report cards. So, now delving a little bit more into the data itself. We look at population trends for ML students, and over the last two years, we have increased ML population. It is, in fact, a microcosm of the population of Olbridge itself. We are very multicultural, and I'm very proud of that. In the last two years, we have increased our ML population from 215 in 2223 to 260 in 2425. Keep in mind, all of this data and the access testing is from the 2425 school year. Our elementary population was at 169, our middle school at 41, and our high school at 50. So, again, you can see that the trends are increasing, despite the fact that sometimes the ML population can be looked at as transient and fluid, but it appears that in Olbridge, they love it so much that they come here and they stay. Now, breaking down a little bit of the data, and as I share this with you, I invite you to look at the last two bar graphs, specifically students who score between 3.5 to the 6.0. Our goal for our ML students is that they attain that 4.5, which is the very last bar graph. Our elementary students in this past year for access, 14% of them actually met that 4.5 exit criteria eligibility, and we're very excited about that. But as you can see, the next chart, the next bar over, 28% of them were nearing that exit eligibility criteria. Same with middle school students. We had 43% of them, which is, if you really think about it, almost half of the student population in our middle schools gaining on the exit eligibility criteria, with 11% of them meeting the criteria of 4.5. And in high school, we had 45% of the students nearing exit eligibility, and 11% actually meeting that criteria. Comparing it from a year-to-year basis in elementary, middle, and high, we see that in middle school and high school, we had a significant uptick, an increase in access scores, eligibility students from the last two years, whereas our elementary students slightly declined. And I can go into a couple of the reasons why in one of the later slides. Comparing our 4.5 exit criteria for district-wide students from the year 2023, 24, and 25, you notice that we remained stable for the last two years. 15% of our students were, in fact, exit eligible and did exit our programs. And when I mention exit, I mean that they are able to then go into the general education classroom population without having to be pulled out. Again, looking a little bit further at the criteria, excuse me, at the four domains of language, you notice here that speaking, reading, listening, and writing are all four taken into consideration. When we look at, I have such bad eyes. When we look at speaking and writing, we notice that those are considered output and more of an active presentation part of language. So, they are always going to score lowest, whereas the other two are passive, and they are going to score higher. This happens year after year with our ML population. Going a little bit more into explaining why this happens in the four domains of language, listening and reading are considered inputs, they are considered passive, you're taking the information in, whereas speaking and writing are outputs, and they are considered active domains of language. And so, when you kind of combine all of this together, we want to understand that our ML students score on par with any other English-speaking student when learning a language for the first time, learning any language for the first time. Every year, our ML program applies for a bilingual waiver. This year, we applied for a bilingual waiver and were approved for five languages. This is the first time that Olbridge actually applied for five different languages. What is a bilingual waiver? Simply put, those districts which are unable to offer bilingual education to students who come to us from a different, speaking a different language, or students who are multilingual learners, those districts are able to apply for a bilingual waiver. This year, we had five languages where students, where we had more than 20 students who spoke a different language. Now, there are a variety of reasons, and here I've outlined them. It could be that we are not offering bilingual education for factors such as age, grade span, geography, we're unable to put all those students into one classroom and offer them bilingual ed. So, in applying for the bilingual waiver, we noticed that we had students, 20 or more students in the languages of Arabic, Russian, Urdu, Ukrainian, and Spanish, Spanish being our most frequently used language. Some of these factors, again, to consider when we're looking ahead, we had several factors, and I'm not going to go into all of them. However, I did want to point out that in 2425, we had a significant increase in newcomer students. We had 21% increase in the ML population within two years, and this would impact any ELA classroom, as it very significantly did impact our ML students and student body. Something else to consider are parent refusals that happen district-wide. Keeping in mind that our ML population, our parents have the final right of refusal for services. So, even when we screen a student into an ML program and the student screens in, the parent has the final right to refuse. Some parents do choose that, because not all of our schools are able to provide ML services. So, sometimes they choose to refuse services. If that does happen, we need to keep in mind that we still have to offer these students supports in that building where ML supports are not available, as well as administer the access test to them every year. And those students' access scores are taken into account each year. Also, looking ahead, we were able to hire some new teachers with ML certification, which helped us to provide the supports that are needed for our EL students. We were able to create new schedules for our students, including something called the emergent classroom, where students who are at risk are better supported with additional classes during the school day. We offer, of course, tutoring sessions. We offer parent communication in the home language of the students, so that parents are better able to communicate with the teachers. We have ongoing staff development and PD all year round. And something that I am very proud of, the Seal of Biliteracy, which is a seal provided, and a certificate provided by the Department of Education for students who are biliterate, meaning that they are able to pass the graduation requirement for ELA as well as another language. We always have our multilingual students taking that particular assessment and graduating with a seal. Last year, we were able to award several ML students, 8% of them were either current MLs or former MLs. 57 seals were awarded in languages such as Chinese, French, German, Spanish, Polish, Russian, Ukrainian. This year, students want to take it in Tamil, also Ukrainian. This year, students want to take it in Tamil, also Ukrainian, Vietnamese, and Tagalog. And finally, the most exciting part of the presentation, this just came to my attention earlier today, thanks to Ms. Stacy Winters, our math supervisor. She was able to provide me with a secret website. And I was able to excitedly find out that when I take the subgroup of our multilingual learners, we have consistently in 2024 in the NJSLA districts, in comparing Middlesex County and the 23 districts, our ML subgroup outranked consistently most other school districts. We were first in third grade, first in fifth grade, and first in ninth grade for ELA, and we were second or third out of 23 districts in math from third through eighth grade. Unfortunately, I was not able to go through every other subgroup, excuse me, every other part of that particular performance assessment, but I was really excited to share this with you because I think it's worth celebrating. And that concludes my part. I'm going to hand over to Ms. Alexis Adenoffi.
Can we ask some questions?
Oh, yes, yes.
Sorry, I did it at the same time again. Okay, so I just want to go back for a second to the chart where it's the four domains of language where you were explaining that there's the listening and reading and speaking and writing. And as far as our students that are eligible to exit the program in, let's say, listening and reading and not speaking and writing, how do you decide who then, do they exit a program in those particular skills and not the others, or how does that work?
So the way that this works is it's taken as an overall. All four domains have to be considered. But when we look at data, we want to see where our students are doing well, where their strengths are, and where they need improvements. So this is good for us to know. So when I look at that whole chart that the New Jersey State sends me upon the completion of access, we have several different columns that I actually look at, and we're able to check and see how did every student do on, even when they take things and they put them together, and we say comprehension versus literacy, how are they doing on that part? What are they understanding, what are they not? So this is really for us to be able to look at and chop and understand how best to support students. But looking at it overall is how access determines, excuse me, is how the state determines exit. So it has to be all four of them combined. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does answer my question. So then in that case, this is for last school year, correct?
Correct.
So then, am I reading it right, like thinking the middle school and high school students really didn't get to exit because we didn't have?
They did.
They did.
Because we get the scores, so they take the test between end of February and middle of April. We get the scores at the end of June, generally. This one, we got June 19th. I look at the scores, we send the information out to the parents and let the parents know that your child has exited. So when they come back to school, unless they're a 12th grader, it doesn't matter, when they come back to school, they're no longer in the ESL class.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question on the waiver part. So by applying for the waiver, are we then not offering those languages? Like, that's what, I wasn't understanding what the waiver was for.
Okay, so by law, we are supposed to offer bilingual education to students who speak a different language because they're coming to us, and the idea behind education is to make students literate, and we want them to graduate in time. There are many districts who don't have the capability due to, you know, grade span or geographic region, et cetera. If you have more than, I should, let me clarify, sorry, by law, 20 or more students who speak a certain language, you have to offer them bilingual education. Olbridge is too large of a district with too many factors to consider, and we are unable to provide them with bilingual education. So I'll give you an example. We have 95 students. We had 95 students when I ran the bilingual waiver, when I actually applied for it, in June of 2025. 95 students who spoke Spanish from grades K through 12. I would have had to hire several Spanish-speaking certified teachers to teach Spanish, social studies, science, math, ELA, you name it. Similar, we have, I believe there are 41 Ukrainian speakers. I would have had to hire several teachers, God bless you, several teachers to fit those specific age levels and to teach those subjects. Very hard to find. So because of that, the state has made something called a bilingual waiver, which allows you to teach them ESL in place. You're teaching them English so that they can catch up to grade level and then learn the materials in the medium of English, which is the instruction we use in Olbridge and in pretty much everywhere in New Jersey.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Annie Hidkeeler. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lex Adenoffi. I am the supervisor of elementary special education, preschool, and literacy for grades K through 5. Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting to you the Dynamic Learning Maps or the DLM test results for the 2425 school year. Before I do go into the results, I do want to take a moment to thank both the Board of Education and Central Administration for supporting the Department of Special Services. It's because of your support that we're able to provide our teachers with tools and programs to really ensure our students' continued growth and continued success. What I'm presenting to you here tonight is a testament to both that support and our incredible teaching staff who works with our students on a daily basis. So I thank you for that. So similar to the NJSLA, the DLM assesses our students in grades 3 through 8 and grade 11 in language arts and mathematics. Students in grades 5, 8, and 11 are also assessed in science, and New Jersey participates in what's called the DLM end-of-year model, which is a computer-based assessment that aligns with both the New Jersey State Learning Standards as well as the DLM essential elements. So how do we really make the determination if a student is to take the NJSLA versus the DLM? So it really is a collaborative IEP team decision. However, like many things, the state does provide us with specific criteria that we do have to consider when making that determination, and that criteria states the following. The student has to have a disability that significantly impacts their student's intellectual functioning and adaptive behavior. The student is primarily taught utilizing the DLM essential elements. The student requires extensive, repeated, and individualized instruction. The student uses substantially adapted materials and individualized methods for accessing their information. And the student's significant intellectual disability will impact their post-school outcomes. So when we look at that specific criteria, for the 2425 school year, Olbridge had 51 students who were eligible to take the DLM in grades 3 through 11. 28 of those students were at the elementary level, grades 3 through 5. 21 students were at the middle school level, grades 6 through 8. And then we had two students in grade 11 at the high school level. So in order to really understand the DLM test results, you do have to understand how DLM categorizes student performance, and it does that by categorizing it in relation to the essential elements. Four key levels are established, which are emerging, approaching target, at target, and advanced. We're looking to see how our students are progressing towards that at-target level. So when I present to you the data, that's our goal. So when we look at the results from last year, we had 51 students assessed in language arts. 15 of our students were at the approaching target level, and six were at target. In math, we again had 51 students assessed. 13 were at the approaching level, and seven were at target. And then in science, which is only assessed in grades 5, 8, and 11, we had 14, 17 students assessed, and three were at the approaching level. So overall, Olbridge Township Public School demonstrated stable participation. So from one year to the next, so 2024 to 2025, we had stable participation in each grade level, but we also had incremental gains in proficiency, so that at-target and advanced level in both ELA and science. Math did show overall growth and improvement. So if you look at this chart, you'll see a comparison between the 2425 school year. In language arts, we remain stable at 25% proficiency. In mathematics, we had a four percentage point increase from 12% to 16% proficiency. And then in science, again, we remain stable at 15% proficiency. I do want to highlight some grade-level strengths. So for grade 6, 29% of our students scored at-target or advanced, which was up from 0% in 2024. In grade 11, we remained proficient at 14%, which again reflects consistency in our outcomes. And then just an area of need, which is our target intervention would be grades 3 through 5, really focusing on those early literacy skills for our students in this specific population. In mathematics, grade 3 highlights, 60% of our students were at-target or advanced, which is significant improvement from the year before. And then from grades 4 through 8, we had a consistent range between 7% and 25%, which again shows stable growth and proficiency. Science, grade 5, 17% at-target or advanced, which is again up from 2024. And grade 11, reminder, we only had two students who participated. We had 14% proficiency, which was stable. I think it's important to see each year how we're progressing. So I did provide this chart, which you'll see a comparison between 2023, 2024, and 2025. You'll see that we have remained stable with the number of students eligible to participate each year. I do foresee that there might be an increase with the number of our self-contained classes growing within district from one year to the next. However, over the last three years, you'll see that we remain consistent between 48 to 51 students. And then again, you'll see from emerging, approaching, target, and advanced levels that we remain stable or have maintained some growth or incremental growth in specific areas. However, with many things, we do have action steps moving forward. While we are making growth, what are we going to focus on in the Department of Special Services? So it really, we really need to continue to strengthen our instructional alignment, and that's looking at our classroom instruction and aligning it to those DLM essential elements. So utilizing the DLM instructionally embedded model to provide teachers with ample instructional tests and assessments that again align with those essential elements and the NJSLS. Expanding our professional development, targeted PD focusing on evidence-based literacy skills and numeracy strategies for our students that are assessed on the DLM. So really focusing on this population of students and what programs and strategies would work in those settings. Ensuring DLM results are not only used to drive instruction, but are really used to drive our students' IEP goals. And then to continue to facilitate that vertical articulation. We started this a few years ago, and I think this has been a paramount thing that we have done in the district in regards to vertical articulation, and just really providing our teachers with the ability to have a smooth transition, instructional and programmatic transitions for not only our teachers, but our students, so just continuing that from year to year. So again, I'm proud of this population, I'm proud of our teachers. I think that each year, we're showing growth. And again, it's a testament to the board, it's a testament to our staff, and everything that we're able to provide our students here within district. So thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. Okay, I have two questions. So 51 students used the DLM assessment this past year. Is that out of every student that has an IEP?
No.
Okay.
So that criteria that I read has to be, so each IEP has to indicate whether a student is going to take the DLM or the NJSLA. If they're not going to take the NJSLA, then they have to be essentially excused from it, and that's where they would take the DLM. That criteria that I read to you before, there is actual paper documentation that has to be provided to me that's completed at the IEP with the IEP team. And if any answer of those answered no, then they can't take the DLM.
Okay, so that was my next question, too. It has to be all of those things combined as a criteria to meet that. Okay, and then one more. So the DLM, is that individualized? Like, is each child's test or however they go about it individualized to that student? Or are they all the same?
So there's linkage levels. So when a student goes in, it's based on a report that a teacher is completing in the DLM system, and then it provides linkage levels. So if a student is, again, accessing the information doing well, then the linkage level will change. Again, we don't want a student to reach frustration. So if they reach their ceiling, then it's done.
Got it, okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I think the, both the results for this and actually all three presentations, like, speak volume for our staff and how dedicated they are. So on behalf, you know, thank you to you guys that presented, and thank you to the staff for their dedication and hard work for our students. Great results.
Thank you, guys.
I want to echo that, Jen, thanks to Dr. Kathy and Dr. Tui, as well as they're leading this forward, and to all the remaining rest of the staff. I think this is the outcomes of what we are here for, right? For the students and to get their incremental scores better and better. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
I do have one thing to add, a quick update, which I think it ties into the superintendent report. I have a quick update. I see Dr. Sasso in the crowd, I see one of our security guards. I just want to provide a community update on the pedestrian bridge here at OBHS. As of today, October 14th, the specification package for bid number 25108 pedestrian bridge repairs at OBHS is publicly available. So it was advertised in the paper, and as of today, contractors that are interested can call Takarski and Millman, which is the architect on the project, to get a copy of the specification package. A pre-bid meeting with prospective contractors is scheduled for Monday, October 27th. At that point, contractors that are interested in bidding the project can come out to the bridge over at the high school with our architect, and they can review the project in depth as far as plans and just, and overall, they get a visual of the scope of work. Bids will be publicly opened on Thursday, November 13th, and subsequently reviewed for compliance. And we look to award the project to a contractor at the Tuesday, November 18th Board of Education meeting. So I know it was a long wait to get to this moment, and once we did finally get the approvals from the DOE, we jumped right on it. The biggest update we got in talking to the architect was that the steel contractors, which is really the work we need to do, they don't care about the cold, they don't care about the weather, they're going to be, you know, going through sleet, snow, whatever it might be. So we're looking forward to getting this project finally done after the long wait and looking to get it, the bridge backed open for Dr. Sasso over there and our security guards who look at me every morning when I pull in asking when the bridge is going to get done. So we're almost there, thank you for the patience.
I think that'll make some students very happy as well.
I believe so as well, according to Dr. Brigant's community update as well.
And it'll probably make Sweetie the bird happy, too. The parrot that discovered all the problems with the bridge. Thank you.
Mr. Waddell?
Yes, sir.
Do you think it'll be possible to have Mike Millman at the operations meeting on Thursday to go through the bid package?
Um, I'd have to reach out, I don't know if that's possible.
Tomorrow?
Thursday is operations.
Thursday is the operations meeting. So I would like, if all possible, to review that bid package in detail during our committee meeting so we could take a look and vet it. And if Michael is available, I would like him to be present, if possible.
Well, it is out on the streets, and there's no better, you know, expert than the architect. So I understand the board has maybe an interest in vetting it, but, you know, no offense, I don't see any architect on this board. So I understand, I will talk to Mike Millman to see if he's available. But I will, if he can't be, you know, I can certainly have him do a write-up summary or something for you guys, but I'll reach out to him.
I think that it'll be important for the committee to vet the details in the report. I have a good relationship with Michael, and I feel that with my expertise in the building industry for 40 years, I could add value to what's going on here. So if at all possible, David, please make those arrangements. Thank you, sir.
So I'm going to move on to the superintendent's report if there's no objection. Actually, no, I apologize. Progress towards goals. You know, our committee structure and meetings are really focused on that, getting the long-range planning, which is tomorrow night, and really understanding the finances. So the board is dedicated to that.
If you can just mention about the tomorrow's meeting, right?
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
We didn't get the committee reports. I'm just trying to, okay, so superintendent search, we're at the finish line. The demographics that we got reported on Saturday, I think it was, 54 people had at least started the application process to be a superintendent in Olbridge. 47 completed. One did come in after the deadline. So 47 applications were considered for it. That came from 10 states, 31 applicants had a doctorate, 16 without. The board spent three hours on Thursday night going through the applicants. The search firm had presented us with a slate of eight people. We narrowed it down to five, six, five. And then we met for seven and a half hours on Saturday and interviewed those five. And we have another long Saturday coming up. So after we have board meeting tonight, committee meeting Wednesday, Thursday, we get to spend more time together on Saturday, so from like 8:00 to 4:00. So by the end of Saturday, hopefully, we would have consensus from the board, and that's when Mr. Parton has his job to do, and then... And then at our next board meeting on the twenty-eighth, hopefully we can present you with our candidate for superintendent. So we're almost there, guys.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Parton. Am I asked, am I allowed to ask a question regarding financial aspect of the search? Not necessarily anything on the candidate.
Why don't we give it a try?
Sure. So the board authorized monies for a national search for a superintendent.
Yes.
Was those monies well-spent? Was there anyone nationally that was recommended for the position who applied? I'd like to have some details on that, if at all possible.
It's not possible at this point, because it's still an ongoing search, so we don't want to disclose any of the candidates or of the specific status of anybody's candidacy at this point. On October twenty-eighth, perhaps we'll get more into that.
So then after October twenty-eighth, if there is, understood. Thank you, Mr. Parton.
Any other questions on that part? Okay. Mr. Waddell, any correspondence?
I do have one correspondence. Correspondence comes from Michael Walters. Please share this email publicly during the correspondence part of the agenda meeting for October fourteenth and October twenty-eighth. Members of the board, on September eighth, I sent an email to Mr. Waddell containing a character reference for Dr. Raymond Peyton. I received no response, and the email appeared to go unread. On September tenth, I followed up, expressing my disappointment at being ignored, and requesting that my letter be read at the next board meeting. That request was also overlooked. To ensure my concerns are heard, I am now forwarding the original email to multiple board members and respectfully renewing my request of the letter, along with this addendum be read at the upcoming meeting. Here's the correspondence. I am writing to offer my sincere and wholehearted character reference for Dr. Raymond Peyton, principal of Memorial Elementary School. Both of my daughters attended Memorial during Dr. Peyton's tenure, and I can say without hesitation that the environment he cultivated was instrumental in their educational and personal development. Under his leadership, Memorial Elementary was recognized as a national school of character. This achievement, in my view, was made possible in large part due to Dr. Peyton's unwavering standards, consistent efforts, and strong moral leadership. In every interaction I have had with Mr. Dr. Peyton, he has been nothing short of gracious, professional, and patient. He has always been generous with his time and attention, and particularly when engaging with parents, demonstrating a deep and genuine commitment to the success and well-being of every student and faculty member under his care. It saddens me deeply to witness how quickly years of hard work, dedication, and commitment to his school community can be called into question or cast aside. I respectfully urge you to consider the totality of Dr. Peyton's contributions and character, and I pray that he is quickly restored to the role where he has been made such a positive and lasting impact. Dr. Peyton's reputation is fairly, is being unfairly untarnished in the court of public opinion at this investigation, as this investigation drags on. The inflammatory and baseless accusations circulating among the student body amount to nothing less than character assassination. While I expect rumors to spread among students, it's disheartening to see adults perpetuating these falsehoods. Though I'm not one for conspiracy theories, the timing of these allegations and the apparent sources of the worst rumors raise questions. Those of us who know Dr. Peyton trust his integrity, but were clearly outnumbered by those drawn to gossip. I have no doubt the accusations will ultimately prove unfounded. I urge that this matter be resolved swiftly, so Dr. Peyton can put this unfortunate chapter behind him and continue the exemplary, exemplary work he's known for. Respectfully, Michael Walters. That concludes correspondence, but I will just address the board and the committee. I did talk to Michael Walters after receiving this email. I did apologize. I did receive the original September eighth email. After I received that email, I sent to Dr., to Mr. Parton for review to be read, and I simply did not print it out to be read at correspondence. So I did apologize for that. I did see the email, I just did not, you know, get it printed out to read, and it was an honest mistake, and, you know, I appreciate Michael Walters accepting that apology and realizing that mistake. So I do bring it tonight to share, and that concludes correspondence.
Thank you. Hearing of the residents on any agenda item. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing of the residents. Policy?
You can do special committee.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. All right, special committee reports, whoever.
Thank you very much. So hopefully everyone could join us tomorrow at our finance meeting at six o'clock at the cafeteria, right? Dr. Turi, it's at the?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, okay. Thank you, six-thirty. That's very good. So hopefully we could all get together and discuss the possibilities of redistricting. We're going to have Parat Samjin giving a presentation, and we want as much input as possible, because this is it. We're going to be redoing our community, a lot of things have to go on, a lot of development going on, so we appreciate everyone showing up. Thank you.
Yeah, the only one thing I want to add to that is, I've been forwarding that invite or the schedule to many folks in the community. If we look at it, this is the first session we are having after like four to six months, I think, especially after the tax increases. So there's, the first question everybody is going to come and ask is, you know, why did we increase the taxes? So in terms of presentation for the committee tomorrow, I would recommend in Mr. Waddell's style, give them a recap of where we ended with, you know, the budget, and then what's the plan forward? That way we have a good story to say, because I do think we should acknowledge their questions first. Whichever format, you know, I would let, you know, the chair of the committee is Mr. Sal, so I'll let him decide how he wants to chair that, but please do be aware that a lot of people are going to come with that first question. So we start with a narrative for that, and then lead us forward. Thank you.
And like the board has said multiple times, like, the work happens at the committee meeting. So this is, you know, when the community says, you know, they want to be involved, they want to, you know, have their voice. The committee meeting is where we're all at the same table. We're all having a conversation. You know, by the time the committee reports and the decisions come to the board, you know, there's less room for discussion at this, at the board meeting level. So please, you know, come to the committee meetings. We have the long-range strategic planning meeting on Wednesday, and then Thursday's operations and food service, so.
Food services, that's starting at six o'clock on Thursday. Whenever it concludes, we'll go into operations, but we will start on Thursday at six for food service. Tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow is six-thirty here at the high school, in that square section for that meeting, so.
So Thursday's meetings are in the admin building.
Thursday will be in the admin building.
Wednesday's in cafeteria, Thursday at the admin.
Correct.
Any other special committee reports?
Madam President, can we just elaborate what operations means to public?
Go ahead.
Obviously, we're going to have food services, which is not part of the operations aspect, but we are going to have buildings, grounds, and transportation. So if anyone in the public has any concerns about transportation, late busing, things of that nature, you're more than welcome to come and vet and discuss with us concerning that topic. I know it's going to be brought up, it's going to be on my agenda to speak at the committee meeting about that, and hopefully we can get some more details. Also, buildings and grounds, as we know, air conditioning is always a big topic, and improvements for ADA compliance, things of that nature, security purposes, so, security purposes. So a lot of these things are discussed in these meetings, and I will be providing David Waddell an agenda, which I think is appropriate, things that the board would like to discuss to get more details. So if anyone has any interest, please attend the meeting, and you can get some valuable insight on what really occurs behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I apologize for doing things out of order. We did the hearing of the residents, now we're on to policy. Any questions on the reading of the policies? Yes. So are we doing motions? Because it says for action, but there's no box.
We are supposed to do the first reading on this.
Mr. Waddell, it's an abolishment, so it's one reading only. So if you want to just knock it off now, we can, or you can do it on the twenty?
We'll wait till the next meeting, then. That's fine. One for abolishments, one then.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we'll not, we'll move it towards action on the twenty-eighth, we'll keep that.
So should we discuss this in the next meeting?
Well, you can have discussion.
I just want to get one clarification. Where are we abolishing, or what's the background around this?
So this was included in our last policy update we had from Strauss Esme, and it was discussed at our policy meeting. At the time, the recommendation suggestion from Strauss Esme, who is our attorney for policy, was that we should revise the policy, which we did. However, because this does not apply to our district, Dr., Mr. Parton here as legal counsel for the district suggested that we actually abolish it, because it doesn't have any factor or impact to our district directly. So that's why we're choosing, it was revised, but it should have been abolished. So we're just kind of fixing that and taking it off our policy. Correct, Mr. Parton?
Correct. It's confusing to have it on your books, because you're not a choice district, so we're just going to remove it entirely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the policy? Okay. Curriculum and professional development, can I have a motion, please?
Giordano, motion.
Mizoun will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mizoun?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three for curriculum professional development passes.
Any discussions on items four through six? I did have, Dr. Hoager, you had said that on item six, the club unified might reopen. A staff member asked me when that might reopen.
We did a second repost, we're going to do another repost, and we were also reaching out to some of the secondary schools to see if we had any interest in staff going to the elementary, because they get out at the earlier time. I also want to point out that on here, each one of these stipends should say each. Because that is per person that is assigned to it.
Not per school, okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Moving on for finance, can I have a motion on item number one? Go ahead.
Dunne will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mizoun?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution one for finance carries.
Any discussions on items two through nine under finance? Any discussion on athletics? Any conversation on non-certificated personnel office items one and two? Any discussion on non-certificated personnel operational item one and two? For non-certificated personnel other, is there a question? Can I have a motion for items one through four?
Giordano, motion.
Dunne will second, Madam President.
Okay. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mizoun?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Absolutely, yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four for non-certificated personnel other carries.
Any discussions on items five through ten? For item six, I'm assuming it's left blank and highlighted, because we don't know yet? All right, thank you. Can I have a motion for certified personnel's items one through three, please?
Francisco will move.
Mizoun will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mizoun?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three for certified personnel carries.
Any discussion on item four?
Ms. Dantuno, we do have one new hire in the audience.
Yay, come on out. I'm sorry, your name?
At least one, unless I'm missing.
Danielle, for Glenn?
Yeah.
Can I have?
This is Ms. Goratsky. She's actually Danielle Goratsky, am I saying it correctly? Okay. Is a power professional aide in our classrooms and is now taking over as one of our preschool teachers.
I'm going to take your picture. So look right, and then, thank you. Welcome to Old Bridge. Any discussion on item five through, four through ten?
Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Wow, well, I went four through ten, we were splitting it up, going by page. Going from four through sixteen, any discussion? Okay. Any discussion?
Wait, hold on.
Go ahead.
On number six, move the board to approve the employment of the following certified There's no name replacing the people that are being replaced.
We're working on it.
All right.
Actually, we do have Miller Grade Two filled.
Okay.
And the other one we're interviewing tomorrow.
Got it.
So with our convention next week, they have an extra week, so they've got two weeks to fill it in. Any other discussions on four through sixteen? All right. Any discussion on non-certificated personnel transportation, items one through three? Any discussion on transportation, items one through three? Okay. Can I have a motion for supplies, equipment, services, items number one?
Jodri will move it.
Dunne will second, Madam President.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on the item number one. I see that we are procuring more devices, like Stewart Chromebooks. So if you can have some background, and we seem to be spending about three fifty K on this, and I do know this company, MRA International, who's very much in the northeast region to supply for public schools and public governments, which is good, but if, any kind of context or the background, where we are trying to supplement these devices?
Sure. We included the purchase of additional student devices in our tax levy and standard application. So an amount was approved and included in that, the application. We know, and we've heard that, you know, there is a need for student devices and improved, you know, updated student devices. So I know there's been at curriculum meetings and different, we've been researching and looking into where new devices are best needed, are most needed. At our first instructional leadership team meeting with principals in September, you know, we said, if there was a potential to make a purchase, you know, where is it most needed? And I think there was an overwhelming, you know, reaction that sixth, grade six and nine are where it's most needed. And this is really the start of a refresh cycle, and starting a refresh cycle where those devices can stay with those students throughout, they're typically a three, four-year cycle as, for a refresh. So with those funds that were approved by the board, and with the tax increase, though, we'll get devices that are much needed at the sixth and ninth grade levels, but then those devices that are new, and those that are existing, will then go into kind of, you of, uh, you know, the pool of classroom devices, and if there's breakage or usage, you know, so those are still gonna be used within the district, but, uh, grade 6 and 9 will now get new, these new devices for a new refresh cycle.
Thanks, Mr. Waddell.
Do they get them next school year in September, or are we gonna do something?
We are, we are working as, so tomorrow, if this is approved, a PO will be out. MRA has, has been working on it, and for this purchase, we've used the, uh, New Jersey State Contract for Computer Equipment, um, HPE, Hewlett Packard is the authorized dealer, so then you have to go to at least three different HP dealers for a quote. Um, MRA was the top quote, um, based on, on pricing, and so they have, you know, the, the inventory in stock. What's that?
Bottom quote, like Chivas, not top quote, as in Heist?
Top is, best price, correct. Um, all, all, price and other factors considered, they, but they did have the best price, um, but they, they have the inventory in stock, so it's really, they, they will be including, um, some asset tagging for us, because it is a, a pretty large, um, inventory that will be taken on, so they do different services like that, white glove service, getting it ready as far as delivery, asset tagging, which we have to do internally, um, for district internal controls. Um, and then once that is ready, they will, will ship out and we'll start working on, on deployment. So I know our technology team is happy to get the devices, um, but they have plenty of work ahead of them to get these out to, to our classrooms.
Thank you.
Quick question. Is that every year going forward, when you enter 6th grade, enter 9th grade, you get a new laptop, or is that just for current?
Uh, we would hope to certainly keep that, that refresh cycle. It's just that the funds that through this tax levy and, this made, that made it possible, um, but the goal is now you budget with that, that in mind, so, uh, as, and I'm gonna certainly make a more concerted effort, as you get devices and, and stuff that comes off, we can go to, instead of just putting disposed and, and it goes to trash, you try to resell, you know, some products, and, and we're gonna continue to look as, as the finances come through us, through lease purchase agreements and different, you know, um, procurement methods like that, but the, the goal would be that we continue this refresh cycle, because what, what it was in the past is, I know we bought devices at same, at one time during COVID, you know, all the, the grant funding was done, um, but the problem with buying everything at one time is it all goes bad together, and, and it, it really, uh, you know, is kind of the cycle we see, not just for technology, but some of our buildings as well, uh, with, with repairs that are coming, so, um, the goal would be to continue that, that cycle.
If you had to guess, even after all of the, you know, uh, work to get them here and then get them set up, what do you, when do you think they'd get into the student's hands?
Okay. I mean, listen, I know you don't wanna answer, 'cause then, just, you know, roundabout, is it this school year?
Would you like to answer? We have, uh, this is, this is Jimmy and Azelli, our Director of Technology, is in the audience, so.
And for those on TV, he said, he's hoping within 30 days.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah.
An idea, like we talk in January, June? Got it. Okay. Any other discussion on these important devices? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mizone?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution 1 for supplies, equipment, and services passes.
Any discussions on items 2 through 5? Okay, moving along. Ms. Lanius, items 1 through 8, any discussion? Okay. Mr. Waddell, do we have any board, secretary and board business?
None to report tonight.
Okay. Hearing of the residents on any district item? Mic is open? Do, do an hour? Okay.
Uh, my name is Brooke Richards Patterson. Uh, two questions. One was, again, I brought it up a few times, but about the committee meetings, if we can televise them somehow, um, does, I'm not suggesting having like a formal back-and-forth and public comments and all that, but just to televise it, like on YouTube or something, put a camera in the, in the admin room? I don't know if that's what you call that room, but, the other thing was, I was just curious, 'cause I thought we were going to be talking, like, hearing more about what's been going on with, um, redistricting and the demography that's been going on over the past few months. I thought that was going to be recapped in October, so if, if I'm wrong, please correct me, or just give us an update. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close the mic. Uh, so that, as far as hearing the reports, that's kind of what the whole meeting about is tomorrow. That's why we didn't have a, um, a strategic planning meeting in September, 'cause the reports weren't gonna be ready, so we felt it was better to just wait till October, so if you wanna hear about the status of our buildings, where our student population is, um, and part of, and as Kieran said, like, the beginning of the conversation of redistricting, that's at that meeting tomorrow. That's why it was moved from the conference room in the admin building to the cafeteria, so.
And, so, correct. The, the redistricting plan is probably part of Pret Samjin's presentation tomorrow. Um, we did have meetings directly with the township. Dr. Brigan, uh, myself met with the township planner, our architect, Pret Samjin Architects, as well as the township BA. So we had a, a direct meeting, and I know they, Pret Samjin had follow-up meetings with the township, so we talked about, um, you know, incoming, our oncoming developments, um, that are in their, the redistrict, or redevelopment plan for the township, and we make sure we're trying to address and, and at least think of those areas that will be redeveloped when we, when we move forward with our long-term strategic planning. As far as the committee meetings, um, where we are with that, we did have a couple vendors come out to look at our, uh, conference room. Where, we're looking to put a recording system in there, it wouldn't be for a live, so the, where we were, um, with that conversation was, we would look to record committee meetings, but they would be, um, recorded and posted at a later date. You guys can all still, anyone that, from the community that would like to watch them, they can go, they will be posted at a certain date. We, we are still in the procurement stage, we're getting all the proposals, there's many different options, you can go as simple as, you know, a camera, or you can have something a little more interactive, where you can, um, you know, there's, there's different options and, and different microphone, uh, so, again, we're working with different vendors for getting those quotations, and once we come to a decision, we're, we're working on getting a, a PO out, but that is still in the works, but the goal would be, we wouldn't televise, they wouldn't be livestreamed, they would just be recorded, and then we'd share those recordings at a later date after the meeting, so. Thank you.
Would it be possible if someone records it on their phone and posts it on YouTube? For now? That's, like, is that illegal? I think that's part of our, the part that we meet in the, we talk about in the beginning, as far as recording a meeting. Right, so, right, so someone would be able to technically do that?
Somebody can choose to do that, yes.
Okay.
So does the board have any old business?
I just want to mention one.
Yeah, that's fine.
I want to, um, thank the Old Bridge School staff, you know, all the way from the bottom, all the way up to Dr. You know, Tuie, Dr. Kathy, to support Dr. Brigan. Uh, I see Dr. Brigan has transitioned more immersed into the, the school system, into the community, and all the meetings that Dr. Brigan has, so again, I just want to acknowledge the fact that I think this transition seems to have been going, you know, pretty well, so thanks, Dr. Brigan, for stepping in and helping in this last 30 days, 45 days. Yep.
I did wanna update the public. My goal this year was to try and, try to work more cohesively with the town. Uh, Dr. Brigan, uh, Mr. Waddell, and myself met with, uh, the council president and the council BA on September 18th. I thought it was a very productive meeting, trying to work more as far as giving opportunities for, like, our cultural clubs at the high school and stuff like that, to maybe be more immersed in the cultural celebrations at the town level and try and, you know, again, starting that working relationship. We had talked also about maybe meeting a little bit more often, so, um, hope to see that continue. Any other, so does the board have any new business? All right. We are going to go into, go ahead, you will? All right. Uh, we are gonna go into executive session, we have more of the superintendent process and a few other personnel items to discuss, um, for those that are celebrating Diwali next week, hope you have a great holiday. Uh, we do not have a board meeting next week, the board will be at the, um, school board convention, so that's why the next meeting is the 28th of October.
Can I suggest something?
Go ahead.
Since the next meeting's October 28th, could we do like a theme, like a costume dress-up thing? Like a Halloween?
It's up to the, it's up to the board.
For a moment, I thought you were asking what Diwali costume, but then I got it, you're talking the Halloween costume.
I think that's a wonderful idea. I think the board should dress up and show their Halloween spirit. I think that's a great, well, I will be at the meeting.
You can't say that and then knock off.
No, I'll be here.
So when we potentially appoint the new superintendent, everyone's gonna be, everyone's gonna be in a Grinch costume, or an Elmo costume, or, you know.
Well, yeah, you're coming out in the Grinch, come on.
I mean, I, I'm just saying, it's been worn before.
I think we can have more discussions on that, and, y'all be surprised on the 28th.
I think it's a great idea.
So, all right.
Madam President, before we conclude, I just wanna say a few words real quick.
That's why I asked, any older new business?
Oh.
So go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
Well, real quick, before everyone leaves, I just wanna sincerely thank, uh, Dr. Tuie, um, Dr. Hoker, and the entire administrative staff, the teachers, the powers, everyone, because quite honestly, the annual testing report definitely proves that this Board of Education is doing the right thing for our children.